I'd like to call to order the regular monthly meeting of Joliet Junior College. Joan, call to roll please.
Roderick?
Present.
Garcia-Guillen?
Here.
Mahalik?
Present.
Marin? Morales? Dan O'Connell?
Yes.
And Wanderle?
Yes, and we received an electronic request to be electronically connected with trustee Morales tonight due to her work troubles.
Motion, a second, and a vote, and then we'll call her up.
Close.
Second. Joan, call to roll please.
Garcia-Guillen?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Dan O'Connell?
Yes.
Roderick?
Can I ask a question? What are the rules for, because we went through the rules with me when I was able to engage in that?
Generally speaking, if you have medical or disability, if it's work for the college or travel for employment, and the third one is like emergency, family emergency. So she falls into there, she fits the requirements.
So this is okay?
Yeah, and that's by the statute.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Wanderle?
Yes.
Peter Moll?
Yeah. Yeah.
Hi trustee Morales.
Hello?
Hello, can you hear us? Alicia?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, good. Thank you very much for being with us this evening.
Thank you.
At 1.03, welcome everybody who came out tonight. 1.04, Pledge of Allegiance. Seeing as I never did much anyway, former trustee Michael O'Connell, two libes, Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Michael. Next item, 1.05, public comments. We have one request this journey?
Just one, Mr. Commandant.
This one. This is addressed from Ms. Andrea Yates from Plainsfield. Come on up, we have five minutes.
My name is Andrea Yates, and I am the wife of recently terminated JJC police officer Joseph Yates. I know many of you are wanting answers about the chief's racist comments, and if they're true or not, and I can tell you they're 100% true. But today I'm here to discuss my husband's wrongful termination, and Chief Commanda's constant bullying, targeting, harassment, intimidation, and ultimately retaliation against my husband. This has been ongoing for many years, but within the last year has become worse. Several months ago, Chief Commanda had my husband and another officer in his office, where he accused them of assisting two lesbian coworkers who had come forward with claims of insensitive comments made to them by other coworkers inside the police department. The chief said to the two officers, "If you're involved with what I think you're involved in, you better not be, or else." He then made an inappropriate comment about how he knew a murderer and why he killed people. The chief stated that the murderer committed the crimes because people had mistaken his kindness for weakness. When the chief said this, he pointed at my husband and the other officer and said, "Don't you make the same mistake." Feeling threatened by these comments, my husband made an appointment with HR, speak to him about this. My husband was in the HR office for about 30 seconds when the chief called him on his radio and wanted to see him in his office. No doubt, the chief was watching my husband on the camera system, as he often did, and saw him go into the HR office. In the chief's office, joined by the same officer from the last meeting, the chief was very angry that my husband went to HR. He demanded to know why my husband was in HR, and said he had no right to go during work hours. We all know this is untrue, we can go to HR anytime we want to. My husband told the chief his reason for going to HR was confidential. The chief, who was furious, stated that my husband was being insubordinate and that he had given him no choice. Later that evening, my husband met with President Mitchell, HR, and Rob Gaelic about the incident that had occurred. Knowing that the chief abuses the camera system for his personal gain, the next day, my husband met HR and Mr. Gaelic at an Austin attorney's office to discuss not only the recent incident, but years of the chief's favoring certain employees, his bullying tactics, intimidation, and threats. Halfway through the meeting, HR received an email from the chief requesting my husband's termination. HR told my husband that it wasn't going to happen, and stated that they were going to keep him out of work for his safety, from Chief Commanda. My husband was out of work for five weeks, during which time several other police department members and school employees came forward to let the school know of the chief's bullying, intimidation, threats, and racial comments he had made. My husband returned to work just as the eight-week investigation was beginning for Chief Commanda. During that time, Officer Yates, my husband, was flourishing under the watch of Commander Cornelius. My husband told me that the department never ran better, and even the divide within the department that the chief had created was starting to disappear. My husband was excited about his job at this time, and he was moving forward. During this time, my husband also met with HR and Mr. Gaelic, and told them that he was worried and frightened that if the chief came back, he would retaliate against him for being a whistleblower. After eight weeks, the chief did come back, and only received a reprimand for his behavior for the many complaints that had come forward. Within 10 days of the chief being back, my husband received an email from the chief the day before Thanksgiving of all days, stating that he would be investigating something my husband had done while he was out for those eight weeks, and he would be looking into discipline. My husband just did his job and did nothing wrong. This email was pure blatant retaliation on the whistleblower. Being emotional and mentally upset by this email, my husband contacted HR and Mr. Gaelic, and advised them of the incident, and told them that the chief did what he feared would happen. My husband told him he didn't know what to do anymore about the chief, and that he needed help. Nothing would be done until after Thanksgiving break. After the break, my husband met with HR, Mr. Gaelic, and his chief supervisor about the chief's email he had sent. These meetings were emotionally and mentally exhausting for my husband. He even thought about resigning because of the chief's constant targeting against him. Two days later, my husband had a meeting with HR and Chief Commanda. In this meeting, the chief apologized to my husband for the email he sent, and said there will be no investigation or discipline. He apologized, that was all that he had to do. After an eight-week investigation into the chief's behavior in which he was found responsible, after he sent a retaliatory email to a whistleblower, he only had to apologize. I am to understand that there was a written agreement or performance plan of some type that was signed by the chief upon his return. Why wasn't the chief terminated per this performance plan agreement? How is this not a violation of this plan? Did this plan allow him to retaliate against anyone he wants? But yet in the end, HR decided to terminate my husband instead. If the school would have done their due diligence by terminating the chief after his investigation months ago, his retaliation email would not have occurred, and my husband would still have his job. If you ask Chief Commanda about Officer Yates, he will simply call him a disgruntled employee. My husband is not disgruntled, he's telling the truth about all of this, and just wants to come to work and do his job without having the chief hunt after him. Chief Commanda, it is time that you own up to your mistakes, and be honest about them for once. You are a very vindictive man. You have ruined a 22-year veteran police officer's future. You have caused pain and anguish to my family, to our family. You have bullied and harassed my husband for years. You let others go, and have done things far worse, including yourself, by turning your head the other way and making excuses. How does this man still have a job when my husband is unemployed and struggling to feed his family?
No.
Thank you for allowing me to come here today and speak. I'm hoping that this does not fall into years, and that something will finally be done about Chief Commanda. My husband, Officer Jay Yates, was the fall guy in this. He lost his job. He lost his future as a police officer. We are struggling to come to terms with what happened here and why it happened. Please, don't let another officer lose his future here because of Chief Commanda. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Next item, 1.1, update on Workday implementation.
I would like to invite Jerome Godlock to the podium, and he'll provide you with an update on our implementation process. Thank you, Jerome.
Okay. Hi to the Board of Trustees and to the Cabinet. I'd like to give you an update today on the ERP modernization project that we've been working on. Since the last time we met, which was on October 9th, that's when the Board of Trustees gave the approval for the ERP selection team's recommendation for Workday Incorporated and Navigator LLC as our implementation vendor. After that event, sorry, there we come. After that event, we worked with Workday and completed the contract in the end of October, followed by completing the contract with Navigator, the implementation vendor, in December of 2019. At that point, we officially named the project Mission Possible. So going forward, and you'll hear me, when you hear the term Mission Possible, that is also the ERP modernization project. And we'll be showing the logo and things as we move forward through the project. Once we now have our contract in place, we've been working with our implementation vendor to define our statement of work, which is essentially looking at the dates, the timings, the resources that are required across the ERP implementation. For now, we are working on the HCM, or Human Capital Management, also known as HR, as well as the financials, which will be the first phase of our project, and I'll talk about that a little later on in the presentation. And then finally, starting in February of this year, we officially started the planning stages of the project, and bringing consultants on board, and working with JJC resources. And I'll go into that a little more in detail. So the goal is now for us to head to what we call our formal project orientation, which will take place on March 23rd, and officially that will be kicking off the project. So now that we've talked about kind of where we've been since October, what I want to talk about is how we're going to manage the project. And in order to do that, we've put together what we call a Mission Possible governance model. And this governance model is essentially showing, from an organizational perspective, how we will manage decisions, make sure that we have the appropriate resources, and clear obstacles and roadblocks that may come up along the way for the project. So starting with that, we have our executive steering committee, which is primarily made up of the President and the President's Cabinet. We've assigned an executive sponsor for that project, Mr. Rob Gaelic, who will be working with us on the HR and the financial implementation of the project. There will also be another phase of the project that we'll be talking about in several months for the student implementation, and we'll have a similar governance model for that. The next group is the project management group. My area is responsible for the program management, along with a person, Anthony Cutera, from the Navigator team, who will be working essentially side by side as we manage the project. Our job is making sure the right resources are in the right meetings to move the project forward, and that decisions are made appropriately for those meetings. When we run into any obstacles or any difficulty, we will essentially take those up to the executive steering committee if needed, or we try to resolve those within the project The next group over to the right is the, what we call the organizational change management and training group. This group is going to be primarily responsible for making sure as we move JJC from a 30-year-old ERP system that you're on today to Workday, that we can exactly make sure that people are trained appropriately, understanding any of the new changes that are coming, and be able to communicate that through the organization to make sure people are ready at the right time to take on the new system when it comes to bear. In order to do this though, we can't do this alone, so we will be working with people throughout the organization. In particular, for this first phase, we'll be working with the human capital or HR group, auxiliary services, and administrative services, which will include the finance group, the payroll group, and others throughout the organization to put the project together. And we'll be working with these individuals through several phases of the project that I'll talk about a little later in detail, as how we move through the project and the And then finally, Workday, even though they're the software vendor, they will also be providing resources that will kind of be like that third eye looking over us, and looking at how we're moving the project forward to make sure we're not missing any key areas. And they'll bring along their experiences, along with over 12,000 other clients that are using their HR and finance software today, 1,200 clients, I'm sorry, that are using their HR and finance software today. And then finally, we'll be creating what we call an ERP advisory council, and this will be made up of people across the organization, outside of those key areas of HR, finance, payroll, et cetera, who will kind of look at all of the decisions that we're making and the choices that we're making to make sure we haven't left anything out or missed anything. And so that will be part of what their role will be as we put that council together. And so now what I'd like to talk about is the timeline, kind of what's going to be happening over the next several months of this year as we move the project through. As I stated, in February, we kicked off the project with our planning stage. We're currently in the March time period, which brings us to today. And so what we're doing right now is we're going through and we're working with teams to collect information and for Navigator to get to know JJC, to get to know some of our business processes. The next step, after we go through the planning phase, is getting into what we call the architect phase. And this is the phase where we essentially start designing the system based upon how JJC needs the system to work. This is where, again, similar to if you're building a house, where we're getting the blueprints together, that will kind of give us the way of how we're going to move forward. After we have that blueprint, finishing up around the May time period, we'll then get into what we call the configure and prototype, and this is actually where we start building the system. This is where we start building new reports, we'll start building new interfaces to our banks, to other subsidiaries and third parties that need to collect information, or we need to gather information back from them. That time period will take us through the May through September time period, followed by then we go into probably the most important part of the project, which is testing. Now that we've built the system, we need to test every aspect of that system from what we call the end-to-end testing. From an HR perspective, that is from recruiting a person all the way up to the day they actually retire, and we need to be able to make sure everything in between works accordingly. A big piece of that will also be parallel testing the payroll. In other words, making sure that the payroll system is paying people as it should. And so we'll be running that in parallel, along with additional payrolls that are running out of the legacy system, and matching the data out of those systems to make sure they're compliant. At the end of that, we'll make a decision on, are we prepared at this point, after this testing, to move to the next stage, which will be our deployment phase. And that's where we essentially start training end-users to use the system, getting them prepared for their new roles, responsibilities for the system. We'll finalize our data conversion, and then we'll be going live in early January of 2021 with the HR and payroll project. Along with that, we'll have about a month of production support from our vendors, who will be here to help us through our first two payrolls of that year, to make sure everything's moving smoothly. And from there, we'll be working in conjunction with another project I'll be talking about the next time I come, which will be on the student side of the project. And that kind of gives you a kind of where we are, where we've been, how we're going to manage the project, and then how we're going to move the project forward with the timeline. Our goal is to come to you, I believe, approximately every two months, to give you more insights on what's going on with the project and how well things are going. So with that, any questions?
I'm just glad they're going to be running a dual system, because if something does happen, and we revert back to the old system, obviously, like that if we have to, right?
Well, the goal will be through the testing, we'll make that decision if we're ready. So if we're not ready at that point, obviously, we'll have those discussions, we'll have to escalate. The goal is though, if everything comes out of testing, and we're meeting, and we're seeing that all the numbers are tying together, we would vote to move forward.
Okay.
But you have enough experience though to know, and know the testing of it, if we are able to move out of that mode and into being fully on a new system, correct?
Yes, absolutely. So one of the things, and a lot of that is not just how we feel, it will be quantitative.
No, it's quantitative.
Yes, very quantitative.
And then the type of training, is it going to be one-on-one, or is it going to be like online learning, or a combination of both?
So it'll be a combination of both. And especially for people who are doing more operational type work, it'll be a lot of hands-on training that we'll be doing at the end of the project. As of now, we're actually doing training, which is a combination of both online training and people will be taking face-to-face training.
Will you also be testing to certify? Because I know when we do systems, in our own systems, we have to be tested and be assured that we know and we're competent to go forward to use that system, not just saying, yeah, we did it as we were sitting there. Will you do any type of testing to confirm that then?
Absolutely. So what we've been working, that organizational change management group that I've talked about to this day, what we've done is we've actually built a curriculum of training that we're going to go through, and then for each one of those curriculums, there's specific output that people should be able to show as they go, and they're testing the system will be our first round of making sure people understand how to use the system, because in order to test, you have to know how to use it. And then of course, following that, will be a round of making sure each individual in each specific role has completed their training, and has gone through the testing and certified in the testing.
And that'll be for management as well as users?
Absolutely. We actually even have a curriculum for the Cabinet as well. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Next item is a moment of silence. We have none this month unless one of our board members has a moment of silence for anybody. At this time, at 1.3. recognition of former trustee Michael O'Connell is... Is Jeff May here yet?
No.
Well, anyway.
We'll let you reject.
Oh wow, you've got a packed bag.
OC, come on up here.
All right.
Is there all your vacations that you're going to go on?
It's Joliet Junior College Resolution, whereas Michael O'Connell served on the JJC Board of Trustees for 10 years, from 2009 to 2019. Whereas Mr. O'Connell is a continuous advocate for the college community through our leadership service and philanthropy. And whereas during his years as a trustee, Mr. O'Connell has assisted the board committee to support thousands of dollars in cost savings to the college, and whereas Mr. O'Connell is an integral part of the 2008-2013 master plan implementation, transforming facilities across the campus, and providing expertise, planning, and support, most specifically for the event center. And whereas Mr. O'Connell is an honored alumna of the JJC from 1969 to 1971, participating in football, basketball, and track, during which he was a top records record holder in Region Four, taking second place in 1970, and sixth place in the National Junior College Track Championship in 1970. And whereas Mr. O'Connell was inducted into the JJC Athletic Hall of Fame in 1994 for basketball, football, and track, and was named one of the top 30 JJC outstanding athletes in 2004. And whereas Mr. O'Connell's generosity extends to his support of financial aid for students and the college's athletic programs. And whereas he has demonstrated a strong and unwavering commitment to his community and devotion to JJC and the many organizations he has served. Now therefore be a result that the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community Colleges District Number 525, Joliet Junior College, counties of Willabree, Kendall, Kankakee, LaSalle, Livingston, and Cook, State of Illinois, does hereby honor the service of Michael O'Connell, adopted a celebratory day of March 2020. Can I have a motion to accept the resolution?
So moved.
Second. Joan, call to roll please.
Roderick?
Aye.
Garcia-Guillen?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
And Wanderle?
Yes. Plaque here, President Michael O'Connell, recognition for the outstanding service of the citizens of Illinois Community College District Number 525. Thank you. Say something?
Well, when I read the paper in January, it said I retired, I immediately called Judy. Does that mean I get a pension? She says, yeah, we'll give you 75% of zero. You taxpayers out there, these people are not paid. I want you to remember that we are not paid for this. I was looking at some things, and it says something that said, "Business as usual." It was a comment in the paper, a letter to the editor about something we'd done. And first I was kind of upset, and I'm like, I take that as a compliment, business as usual, because we've been very, done a great job of being fiscally responsible, I feel, the last 10 years. And I just brought out, I was trying to remember some old things, and you know, our fitness center was moving over $500,000 to $600,000 a year, and we got that to make a winner. Football program, which hurt me to cut out, because I was a former quarterback here, but it needed to go, that was like $250,000 saved. LED lighting, shutting down the older buildings during the summer, it was Pat Van Dyne's ideas. Paper building, work order changes, I'm trying to remember all these things, Judy around. Motion lighting, I mean, just the lighting along the energy, we were able to get so much in rebates, I think it was almost a half billion dollars we got from ComEd in rebates. And Renaissance Center, childcare, you know, just, keep it our word on the tuition, where we hiked it up, I don't even remember now, it was like $18, but if something came through, we cut it back and gave rebates to the students. But just our cost-saving group alone, I don't know the exact number, and I may exaggerate a little bit, but it was almost $2 million a year in actual cost. That means, that's every year we save that money. And then that didn't count in the time that was saved, especially in the billing area and things of that nature. That being said, it's hard to leave, but I got nine grandkids, two in junior high, all active, five in high school, one in college, which he's playing senior year, playing volleyball, already been to California, been to St. Louis, going again this weekend. I'll be going to Indiana to see a play, I'll be going to Ohio and Michigan. I still managed to get a month in Arizona, but I still, you know, it was time for me. It was time for me, and that being said, you know, two people just wanted to talk on, I can't hit everybody here, but you know, when I first came in, right away I was committing with Judy and Pat Van Dyne, and Pat was just phenomenal. I can't believe, I said, Judy, you really want to be here? You're a busy man. He said, I want to be here. And he contributed so much. And it was a good on the line, you know, Carl and Jimmy, I'm going to miss our talks, you know, and the kids, I follow on Facebook though, and all that. And you know, we, again, we go down the line, Bob, I got to tell people this, not once, and I fought, we were tooth and nails the first four years regarding some building that was going on, things of that nature, not once did he ever come to me and say, Buck, you need to vote this way, you need to do this. I've never pressured to do anything. And I kind of want to say that to board members, I mentioned it before, vote your own conscience, do your research. If you've got a question, this president is so accessible, it's unbelievable. And remember, we're just in charge of the president, we're not in charge of the men sitting here and people over here. You know, we need to go through the president, she will either answer the questions, or get us to the right person for those questions. And don't be afraid, I mean, it took me four years to understand the tax levy, I'll be honest, I'm not sure if I still am. Speaking of that, I got to mention Jim Peek, because he's not in front of the center very much, but every year, he gives us these possibilities, and he's almost to the T every year. I mean, he catches it just about right every year. And it's a little dull information, Jeff, but it's important. Very important. And then I've mentioned Bob, and I just got to mention, because we had several trustees that were involved in the ICCTA, Marine has jumped in with both feet, has traveled... Marine has jumped in with both feet, traveling all the time, and it's keeping us updated, which is very important to this board, and that's very much appreciated. And Judy, you know, I came in, you know, obviously the former president was sick, two presidents ago, things were up in the air, Jimmy took over a department that was just in chaos, you know, and I said to my wife, I said, is it a much better place than when I started here? And we're in a much better place, a much better place. Still got some things to get going, we know that, but much better place, so much appreciated. And then final, you got to mention Joan, I mean, this place wouldn't run without Joan. Thanks. So I got...
You'll see her in Arizona.
I got Duke or Club at 6:30, so I got to go.
But like Mike, we're going to miss you. Okay, next item is item 1.3.2, Office of Office and Ceding of Our New Trustee Betty Washington. I got to walk up here again, come on Betty. Congratulations. Okay, this is the Office of Office. Raise your right hand. Hi, state's your name.
I'm Betty Washington.
Solemnly swear or affirm?
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of Board of Trustees Joliet Junior College?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Trustees of Joliet Junior College?
Illinois Community College District 525.
Illinois Community College District 525.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You get to sign these two things, and Joan will witness them for you. If you have any comments, feel free. Congratulations and welcome, Betty.
Thank you.
Next item, 1.4.1, Proclamation Designating April as Community College Month.
I would like to invite Ian Wilkinson to the podium. Ian's a first-year JJC student and is majoring in agricultural engineering, hoping to transfer to a four-year university in the fall of 2021. He is highly involved in the Student Ag Association and Student Government with hopes it will strengthen his leadership skills for future endeavors.
Thank you. Whereas more than 1,200 community, technical, and junior colleges, public and private in the United States, have contributed enormously to the richness and availability of American higher education. And whereas the public and private community, junior, and technical colleges provide a broad array of educational services which include transfer education, two-year associate degree programs, certificate programs for employment, basic skills education, continuing and community education. And whereas, community colleges work in partnership with business, industry, and government to provide job training assistance and economic development. And whereas, through the services, or whereas, community colleges provide necessary resources for community service, including career development, job search assistance, counseling, and developmental education. And whereas, through these services, community colleges meet diverse and changing local needs and fulfill a vital function within the state's higher education system. And whereas, community colleges provide an opportunity to obtain post-secondary education at a reasonable cost within commuting distance of their students' homes. And whereas, Joliet Junior College is one of the 39 community college districts in Illinois providing occupational pre-baccalaureate and continuing education courses and services to more than 1 million Illinois citizens each year. Be resolved that the Joliet Junior College Board of Trustees hereby designates the month of April as Community College Month in Illinois Community College District Number 525, and encourages all citizens to recognize the value and opportunities available to them at Joliet Junior College and at community, technical, and junior colleges throughout the state. Signed this 11th day of March 2020. Thank you.
So moved.
Motion in a second, Joan Colerole, please.
Broderick?
Aye.
Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Mahala?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
And Wanderlake?
Yes. Wonderful. Thank you, Ian. Next, 1.4.2, Proclamation Designating April as Earth Month.
I would like to invite Dean Katie Zuccarello to the podium.
Thank you, good evening, everybody. Whereas Earth Month is celebrated at Joliet Junior College through the entire month of April with a focus on Earth Day, which is April 22nd, and Arbor Day, April 24th. Whereas Earth Month provides individuals numerous opportunities to learn and engage, including but not limited to tour of the arboretum and natural areas, Schmuck Student Summit, World Vision 6K fundraiser, environmental speakers, Hobart Road cleanup tour of our lead buildings, tour of our Fruit Tree Guild, and our Earth Day Expo. Whereas April 22nd, 2020 marks the 49th anniversary of birthday celebrations in the United States, providing an avenue for growth of our global consciousness to work toward resolving issues in our environment, inspire new ideas, ignite passion, and motivate people into action. Whereas April 24th, 2020 is National Arbor Day, which is an annual observance that celebrates the role of trees in our lives and promotes tree planting and care. Whereas Joliet Junior College recognizes the importance of sustainability through its board policy on sustainability adopted in 2012, which commits us to our core value of sustainability. Whereas Joliet Junior College Sustainability Initiatives help keep students, staff, faculty, and our community active and current in the ever-growing awareness of our society. Now therefore be resolved that the Joliet Junior College Board of Trustees proclaims the month of April 2020 is Earth Month in Illinois Community College District Number 525, adopted this 11th day of March 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, Joan Colerole, please.
Broderick?
Aye.
Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Mahala?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
And Wanderlake?
Yes. Okay. Next report is 1.4.3, Faculty Union Report, Dr. Robert Marcy.
I'm sorry that Mike had to leave, I saw his original speech, it was like two, three pages about Bill and I, so I... But that's fine, I do want to thank him, even though he's not here, for his service, I thought I'd get a chance to do that. I know when he first came in 10 years ago, you know, I went out to lunch to talk about, you know, things happening on campus and all that, and then it just pretty much went downhill after that. Now he was great to work with and I really appreciate it. Anybody who sits on this board and puts in 10 years or 43, if there's a gap in between them two, we truly appreciate your willingness to serve, so. And that said, congratulations on being named my new trustee. I'd like to welcome you from faculty's perspective, and anytime you want the faculty's perspective on anything, you can always contact me and I'll tell you what I can tell you. But welcome. Thank you again, as I said to everybody else, thank you for being willing to serve. And that said, we believe every month is Community College Month, and every month is our month, so I appreciate the proclamations of awareness. And that's all I have, I hope you all have... Well, you don't have spring break, do you? You have...
I bet OC made you buy lunch.
I'm not going to say he's not here, but it was a good lunch.
Thank you, Robert.
You're welcome.
Next is Adjec Faculty Union Report from Ms. Laurel Isco, she is not here, but she sent a big hi to everybody here tonight. And she will see us next month. Moving on, item 1.5.1, Approval of Minutes for the Regular Monthly Meeting of February 26, 2020.
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second. There's no additions or corrections?
I'd like a discussion.
Sure.
Under Board Protocol, under 1.0.5 Public Comments, being that protocol is that we are not as trustees to speak, because we speak as a team, not as one individually, I'd like to identify that going forward, we should not be engaging as Ms. Alicia Morales did. And the comments here should be identified as citizen Morales, not as trustee, because we do not speak individually, we speak as a team. So I'd like that noted that going forward, that the board members are not, the trustees are not to make comment, as protocol is, after this, because it appears that this was all contrived and it should not have been allowed.
Comments are taken as noted, Ms. Broderick. Joan Colerole, please.
Dan O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Broderick?
Yes.
Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Mahala?
Yes.
Morales?
We're approving the minutes, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and I believe that as a trustee, I should still be able to make any comments. I did not speak, and I do not agree with the thought of Broderick, but I do approve the minutes, yes.
And Wanderlake?
Yes. Next item is 1.5.2, Approval of Minutes for the Special Meeting of January 27.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any additions or corrections? If not, Joan Colerole, please.
Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Mahala?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
And Broderick?
Aye.
And Wanderlake?
Yes. Next item is 1.5.2, Approval of Minutes for the Special Meeting of February 5, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any additions or corrections? If not, Joan Colerole, please.
Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Mahala?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
And Broderick?
Aye.
And Wanderlake?
Yes. Next item, 1.5.3, Approval of Minutes for Special Meeting, February 5, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any additions or corrections? If not, Joan Colerole, please.
Mahala?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Broderick?
Aye.
Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
And Wanderlake?
Yes. Item 1.5.4, Approval of Minutes for Special Meeting, February 18, 2020.
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second. Additions or corrections? If not, Joan Colerole, please.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Broderick?
Aye.
Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Mahala?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
And Wanderlake?
Yes. Item 1.5.5, Approval of Minutes for Special Meeting, February 20, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any additions or corrections? If not, Joan Colerole, please.
Broderick?
Aye.
Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Mahala?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
And Wanderlake?
Yes. Item 1.6 Communications, any further communications, Mr. Tardy?
No further communications, Mr. Chairman.
Item 1.7, Approval of the Agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? If not, Joan Colerole, please.
Broderick?
Aye.
Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Mahala?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
And Wanderlake?
Yes. Item 1.8, Consent Agenda, Approval of the Consent Agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion. If not, Joan Colerole, please.
Broderick?
Aye.
Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Mahala?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
And Wanderlake?
Yes. Moving on to item number six, Who's the Soul Business Board Comments?
I have some things. One, it was discussed at our last meeting about trustee information, about the ability to contact us. We've reached out to all the community colleges to find out what their scope of how they do it. And all communication is directed to the Board Secretary, which would be Joan Tierney, as it is already set up, as is. And they do not enable the trustees to have their phone numbers out there or their emails out there, because this way the chair then is alerted to anything that comes through. And as we saw last month with the not informing all of us of what was going on at the last meeting, it's only in our best interest to have it stayed at status quo that Joan Tierney acts as the Board Secretary to receive any calls, or I mean, any communication through the email system as is set up on the website right now. And I'm bringing that to your attention because I did reach out to all of the delegates on my, on the ICCTA, and they said it's the best way to have it so that there is control that the chairman is always in the loop. That's one. Two, I read through all of the FOIA's that were requested within the last couple of months. And I'd like to know, and I'm going to ask this Carol, because I've addressed it here and to Dr. Mitchell, can we get a FOIA form on our website? Because whenever you, whenever you go to all of the other governing boards, they have the forms that you have to fill out?
Just so you know, the PAC says that there is no prescribed form, so...
No, but we can make a protocol for us to...
No, no, you can't. You can have it, but they don't have to use it. So it, you can have a form, and lots of places do have a form, and people will go there, some of them are self-fill out, and then they automatically get sent and whatever. But if a person doesn't use the form, you know, if they write on a napkin, I would like these documents, PAC says you got it. So we can have it, but nobody's required to use it, and we can't have a policy that says you have to use it.
Well, in looking at that, there is so many generalities of such an expanded amount of information that people want, that I think if you identified what a form would be like of what they could ask, it might narrow it down so that you don't have to have hours spent trying to figure out what the person is looking for in FOIA.
What you're allowed to do is contact the requester and, you know, ask them questions about your request. If you don't understand it, ask them to clarify it, and we generally do that, you know, when it's appropriate. But just know that you can't have a prescribed form that they have to follow. If that's your rule and you say, well, you didn't use our form, so we're not answering your request, the PAC will say that's not right.
No, and I understand, Carol, I understand that, but whenever we've done FOIA's for other government agencies, they do have a form that they say, here. So the general public doesn't really know sometimes, and sometimes giving them a form helps them aid in the situation.
Yeah, there's no problem with having a form.
And I'm looking for an aid, I'm looking for an aid, okay? The other thing I want to talk about is, in the minutes, we did not approve, we had a six to one vote on the J.D. Ross Award. Do we not have anyone representing the J.D. Ross Award this time?
Not this year, no.
Not this year, okay. And then could we please, in regards to the protocol of the open opinions, open comments, could we please make sure that every board member has what the protocol is for our policy, that we do not make comments during that, when they're making public comments, it's[1781.36] It's only for us to listen at that point in time. And I think because there was a concern that I voiced in the minutes of this past meeting, I think that should be in front of all of us so that everybody knows what the actual Protocol of JJC is, to that we listen only. We are not making comment.
Discussion?
It's not a motion-action item. These are trustee Broderick's comments that are being made under Point Six of the Agenda.
I'd like to make a comment to that, please.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Alicia.
Okay, thank you. I support full transparency, and if anybody has any questions or wants to be your board member, I have no problem with that. Because when we are asking people to vote for us, we are reaching out to everybody and asking for their support. Another thing, I support the system we have now, where anyone can vote to the Board Secretary. But what I do ask, is there is a special respect to speak with a certain board member. Does that board member be notified? And we know that we have to fill that information up to the chairman. That's perfectly understood. I just would, again, support that we have transparency and that we work as a team. So that's not only... Thank you. And I have no problem with my phone number being put out on the email on the website, just like the Joe Hiddeday Council people have their phone numbers so that we can contact our councilperson if we have any questions. I think the more transparent we are, the better. Thank you.
I think the concern falls, and I'm gonna follow with this, I think the concern falls that at the last occurrence, we did not have the chair informed. And I think in order to keep the chair informed, as all of the ICCTA people are saying, it's in the best interest for the college and for communications that the chair knows at all times what's going on, to keep it directed through the secretary.
Great. Well, at this time, the procedure proposed change is being his under-legal review from our attorney, who's gonna check our policies and procedures to see if there's any, anything that we shouldn't be able to do. We'll have a lot of recommendation at the next meeting. With that, moving on to... Item 7.1 through 7.7 was the first reading of board policies. Item 8.1 was Assold Business, third reading of board policies. And moving on to number 9.1, Representative of the JJC Foundation, Ms. Nancy.
Yes. So we will have a meeting next week. I will provide additional information at our next meeting.
Okay, thank you. 9.2, Rep. from ICCTA, Ms. Broderick.
Okay, just being the fact that I did have such a long report last month, thank you Joan for reading it for me. The only thing I'm gonna mention is that on March 12, which is tomorrow, 13th and 14th is the ICCTA Regional Meeting in Bloomington. They are making a discussion of whether on the 13th and the 14th, if we're gonna need to be present or not due to all related to the coronavirus. So I will let you know in email format if they do open it up for phone discussion so that you can get on and listen to the meeting. And then on April 16, we are in the process of planning the regional meeting, since we are the host. And we are looking at April 16 right now that Dr. Mitchell and Joan and I are working on with the other community colleges. And I'll fill you in as we get more tentative responses back from people when we put it out.
9.3, Student Trustee, Shalma is not here. Does she have a report?
I didn't know.
Okay. Next item, 9.4, Buildings and Grounds Committee, Mr. Mahala and Mr. O'Connell.
Well, we had a great meeting tonight, as usual. It was fun and active, right there. Couple of things that we got going is, tonight, you guys, we approved the Romeo, Romeo Ville B Entrance Canopy Replacement. It was kind of a little bit above bid, because we had to fix the structures. What are those called on the side of the canopy? The... The pillars, yes. Had to fix the pillars, which wasn't really an estimate. So it was a little bit above budget, but we made up the difference in all the other estimates that we had tonight. We also approved the parking lot improvements, which is gonna be for... Which is gonna... Oh, the canopy one's gonna start in April. Parking lot improvement is gonna be for the main entrance, which will be shut down for a little bit, because we think we're gonna have to go through a different entrance, because you gotta let that stuff settle and set. And also for... What's the parking lot? Which one was that?
That was for main campus.
Main campus parking lot, yeah. And then we also had the roof replacement bid, was originally budgeted for $693, $693,000, and came in at $605,000. It was also great to see a lot of local contractors actually received Loopes awarded to them. And then the portal replacement for the B Building, there was 156 funders, 12 bids were received. $135,000 was originally budgeted for, and it came in at just under $115,000. And I was informed that we're also starting the Master Plan Talks with the contract, with the contracts with the architects and the contractors that were chosen. And so just a little negotiation and contract talk going on there. And then... Workday, that's a... Workday, oh, Jerome gave the Workday update. And I was also informed, and Dan and I were informed, that the Romeo Ville campus may be used for the Rib Fest parking, possibly, which I heard they're gonna actually pay us some, possibly pay us some rent also with that.
Well, then they'll allow us to market.
They'll allow us to market, yes. So for free, so we can get some students. Other than that, that's all I really got. Dan, you got anything to add to that?
It's the neighborhood Rib Fest, right?
Yeah, but it's in Romeo Ville, so...
Will the architectural plans, is that going to include even the police station too?
Yes.
And the other is going to be for the bridge?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's for the city center campus, the campus police station, the new shuttle space, and the new student bridge.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Glad you guys got those pillars worked out, because you both pillars of the Buildings and Grounds Committee. Okay. Next, item 9.5, President's Report, Dr. Mitchell.
Okay, I just have a few updates this evening. First of all, welcome to trustee Washington. I look very forward to working with you as we move forward. Tonight, I thought it was important just to update the campus community and the college district on the coronavirus outbreak. The college has been very proactive, beginning in January. The end of January, we sent out our original email to the college campus regarding the preventative measures that we were taking across campus. Later, or earlier this month, in March, we sent out a coronavirus advisory information piece, and then followed by an important announcement just before spring break to our students. So any students or employees that were traveling to countries identified by the CDC as Level 3, currently it's China, South Korea, Italy, and Iran, that the colleges are requesting that they do not return to campus for 14 days on the date of their return. Then additionally, on March 9, we had sent an email out. We made the decision to suspend all international travel, formally suspending any college-sponsored international travel until further notice. This afternoon, we had a business continuity meeting talking about next steps and decision-making on campus, you know, from a variety of things, of what we would do if we would have to close, if we excluded students, you know, what that would look like. Obviously, we had Dr. Marcy there this afternoon. We wanted to hear from him as far as if we had to cancel